Today is Tuesday, November 9th, approximately four o'clock. I'd like to call the order of the Bay County Board of Commissioners. If you take your roll, please.
Commissioner Fox?
Present.
Commissioner Begic?
Here.
Commissioner Coonan?
Here.
Commissioner Herrick?
Here.
Commissioner Redkey?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Chairman Creager?
I am here. Will stand for the invocation and the appointment of the ladies and gentlemen.
Lord, we ask that you grant to this Board of Commissioners and all those in authority the patience and understanding to work together for the good of all people. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good will of the liberty of this world.
Thank you. We have a couple minutes to review. One dated 10/12/2021. What is your pleasure?
Support.
Any discussion on those minutes? If not, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the minutes from 10/19/2021. What is your pleasure?
Support.
Discussion on those? With none? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have citizens' input. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? Now would be the time to stand. If you give me your name and address, that'd be wonderful. Welcome.
Leonard.
There should be a sheet to be able to sign in.
Would you want me to sign it?
Please.
Good afternoon. This has been bugging me for over years, just before the pandemic, and I never did get an answer. Why did they sell the Bay County market?
Well, I think it was time for Bay County not to be a landlord, and the times were right for us to be able to move on so that they could develop that area.
It could be, you know, used for many things. It doesn't have to be just used for, I mean, the vegetable thing with the farmers and that, but it could have been used for auction or anything. It was just a nice place to go when they had the flea market there. You could take your grandkids, and you meet people and stuff. It just seems like it's taken away instead of, it didn't need that much of an upgrade to bring it back to what it should be.
You know, times are tough when we have changes, and sometimes it's hard to move on. But when it comes to the restaurant itself, it was in dire need of an upgrade with some major expenses, as well as the marketplace and the structure that needed to have some severe work done on it also.
Because you know this.
It just turned out that with the timing of what was going on in our economy and the development that was going on with the Uptown, it was a good time for us to no longer become a landlord.
The tri-county area, everybody else is starting a market, and Bay County is getting rid of theirs. It just didn't seem right to me.
Appreciate your comments.
So I guess that's all I got to say about it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Good afternoon. My name is Connie Mosner, 2918 South Euclid.
If you'd sign into, please.
Sure. This is all new to me, my second meeting, so I'm not sure how the process works, so...
Not a problem.
Patience with me, please.
Yeah.
Do you have my address?
Please.
I just about, you know, I'm proud, I've been here all my life, almost 62 years. I, um, I just have some questions. We prayed. That's the first time, I didn't hear it last time, I don't think, but wow. We invoked Jesus, and we asked for his help. Thank you. That is awesome. We have been given rights by our Creator, by God, that can never be taken away. And quite frankly, I'm a little disturbed with our rights that are being taken away, attempted to be taken away, the government overreach. I'm not really prepared, so I won't go into much detail, but I have some questions. Why are the souls in Bay County being denied treatment, life-saving treatment, when they are diagnosed with SARS-CoV-2? Why are the doctors saying approximately for the last 18 months, there's nothing we can do, or they give treatment that they know isn't going to really work the best? When there are many doctors, lots of research, who are saving lives, and there's even some estimates from some doctors that 80 to 85% of the lives could have been saved if they would have had early treatment ASAP, especially high-risk people. This is happening in Bay County by physicians. A physician in Bay County denied both of my friends access to his, he's a family doctor for them because they're unvaccinated. I walk in the building, it recommends wearing a mask for those unvaccinated. That's discrimination. Do vaccines prevent infection? Do they prevent transmission? Any suspected deaths from vaccines? Are they being, autopsies being performed in the county? I'm tired, quite frankly, of the discrimination. I'm tired of the bribery. I'm talking at the university, $300 email at Delta College for if you get the vaccine. I know the legislature is trying to get the masks off at the universities. It should be a choice. If people want to wear them, fine. We know the studies, how effective they are. Not everybody can wear a mask. You're supposed to just suck it up and wear a mask. I can't breathe with a mask. I'm hardly working because I work in healthcare, and I cannot tolerate wearing a mask. So I do not at a certain job. And also pharmacists in our county, they're getting between the doctor and the patient relationships. There's some lawsuits in other states that are happening now, according to Dr. Corey from Frontline COVID-19 Critical Care Doctors, lawsuits against pharmacists because they're withholding treatment, like ivermectin, the naughty word, hydroxychloroquine, and there's others, but they need to be treated right away. There's many, and the science is evolving. There's more and more treatments from a multitude of doctors. We just have a one narrative. Get the vaccine, wear a mask, take the test. How effective are those tests? What tests are we working? What tests are we using in the schools? I wanted to get that answer. How effective are they? I understand they're not even supposed to be used for diagnosing. Yes, people are getting sick. Yes, we have to be cautious. Is anybody talking, the health department? Are they talking about boosting our immune system, taking care of our immune system? It breaks my heart that people are diagnosed, and the doctor says, just last week, my friend, fully vaccinated, second time she was sick this year. The first time she wasn't sure if it was COVID, she didn't get tested. The second time she got tested, doctor said nothing what they can do. I called McLaren to find out. You can have monoclonal antibodies. The doctor has to give a prescription, and the MedStar will bring the monoclonal antibodies to your house. She didn't know that. I don't know if her doctor knew it or not. Now she knows, she can pass it on. Why is an important, life-saving information being passed on? These are souls. We're all made in the likeness and image of God, and people are being denied the truth. I'm just tired of hypocrisy. I'm tired. I'm tired of the lies. I'm not going to have a Build Back Better, the Great Reset, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to fight for my constitutional rights for those unborn and my future generations. I'm not going to let anybody walk on the Constitution. I'm done. I'll go in that health department, and I won't wear a mask like I did to the Secretary of State and everywhere else. And I don't care. People want to wear a mask, that's their choice. Their right. I have rights too. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the board? That being said, let's move into petitions and communications. Under our public hearing, we will need to go out of regular order. And before we move on, just so that you know, we will be bringing up the transfer and oversight and supervision for the community corrections in December. So what we'll be doing today is we'll be talking about the closing of our Community Development Block Grant. So with that being said, I think we need a roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Redkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Chairman Creager?
Yes. Thank you. On dealing with this block grant, Francis, did you want to come up?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
We, in, from 2015 to 2017, were awarded a grant by MISTHA to help rehabilitate low-income and modern-income homes, to bring them up to a standard of quality living, healthy, like furnaces, roofs, anything in an emergency-type situation. This grant has been expended. We've returned no money. We were able to help approximately 17 families in this time period, and all the paperwork has been submitted, and MISTHA is just asking us to do a final closeout, submission of the summary documentation, and notice that we follow the procedures.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this? Yes, sir.
I forgot something. I just wanted to ask, how come, on that market again, how come Bay City and the county don't work together on some of these things like that? Doesn't that, they were trying to have a market on Washington Street when the Bay County market's right there. Did they have to have two separate markets?
Unfortunately, we're beyond public input right now. We're talking about this block grant. But I know that there was communication between Bay City and the county dealing with the farmer's market, and so we do try to work with the two entities.
You know, future generations, if you get, that market there would cost you, that you sold, would cost you a million bucks to build that. And you got it for free anyway, and in 1936, the government, the United States government is the one that gave you that market.
Yeah, I don't have the history of it.
I might be wrong, but...
If you want, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't real excited either. It was a decision by the Board of Commissioners to sell Chuck E.'s market. He was, been a longtime friend of mine, but I know the city actually purchased the property, so city and the county worked together. They'd like to have more affordable housing available to people in the city. My own thoughts would have been, we could have kept it on the tax rolls, it would have been better. Well, it wasn't, wasn't really on the tax rolls, but it was, it, I think, you know, the lease had gone back to 1947, so it was almost 60 years or something that the Militello family had it for many decades. And I used to work there at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning when I worked, picked produce for Jack Steel. We'd go out, and it was a thriving market, and we all loved our memories of those days when it was really the spot to go to get nutritious and fresh, you know, family-grown produce and other food. And the, I think the market went down to just two vendors at one point, and then they had the flea market. Chuck E. transitioned to a flea market from the, from the vegetable, you know, market. So it was, and then I think Chuck E. was struggling. He was very significantly behind in his rent, hadn't made rent payments to the county in, I think, a couple of years. So he just said it was, there was virtually no way to make money out of it. Now, the cost of the pavilion to fix, I'm trying to, do we have, Kristen, do we recall? It was close to a million dollars to reinforce the structure. And so the county board, yeah, because it's in danger of collapse. And I think there was several thousand dollars spent to see if they could shore it up with our, with our county maintenance department. Kristen, if you want to weigh in. But as long as, you know, you came down to express your concerns.
You mean the main structure of it?
Yeah, the pavilion where the flea market and the farmer's market was.
Because I've walked there before, you know, I seen different beams up there that rested. Needed some attention, but I didn't...
City was on the verge of condemning it, so, but it was, I personally...
I don't remember exactly what the dollar figure was, but it's been a while, but it was very significant. Our buildings and grounds crew did spend a lot of time out there before we sold it, fixing the pillars, and shoring all of that out to make it safe and, but there, between repairs and painting and the pavement and all that, the price tag to fix it up was very, very, very significant.
And if I could just add one more thing. I think our Corporation Council worked with the realtors and the lenders who, ultimately several lenders offered to finance the purchase for $250,000 if Chuck E. wanted to buy it, and his answer was, no, I'm not interested in owning it. So that's, those were the obstacles we had to get through. However, I used to love to walk through the flea market, and also when the farm market was, farm market was operating, to go to support local producers and farmers in Bay County.
It's too bad it couldn't be restored or whatever, because, you know, you do have these high-rises around, all over town. I mean, that'd be a place where you could go and play pards or something like that. I mean, it doesn't have to be, didn't have to be just for...
So before we end this discussion, Commissioner Coonan?
I was going to do a point of order. We're presently under public hearing, and we should only be discussing this particular issue. We can talk on your issue as soon as this public hearing is done. We can talk all night if you want, that's fine. But let's address this closing of the Community Development Block Grant under public hearing, then we can go on to something else.
Thank you. So at this point, seeing that there's no one else to comment on the grant, a motion to go back into normal business would be in order.
Support.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go back in our normal order. Next on our agenda, we have Keith Markstrom here, talking about the Bay Veterans Foundation, an update on the workshop. Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Keith Markstrom, President of Bay Veterans Foundation, organization that we founded in 2015, mostly by a number of Vietnam veterans. And as some of you, as most of you are familiar, we partnered with the county and the city and the county library system to renovate Battery Park in 2016. We installed the Michigan Gold Star Monument in 2017. In 2018, we bought the buildings, the old Wings and Things Building, block north of here. And I've been meaning to come before the board, but because a lot of people want to know what's happening. And as you have driven by, you can see where there's a parking lot, there's been some activity. So I prepared this little fact sheet, and I want to go through it real quickly, but it's more for your education for later. As it's noted here, and I want to state too, that Bay Veterans Foundation is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. We're a veteran service organization, but unlike the American Legion, or the Plav, or the AMVETS, their membership criteria differs. We are a different mission, different purposes. We're a charitable organization, and that's a real distinction between all the veterans' organizations. As I noted, the parking lot's been installed, installation of new double-door entrance into the shop area, which is our primary entrance and egress at this point. All of the interior metal stud walls in the shop, classroom, lounge, kitchenette, all that has been finished. There were additional ceiling joists to reinforce the ceiling, so that in preparation for the HVAC units, we were notified that they're on back order. We won't be getting those until the middle of December. We're also experiencing some labor shortages and supply chain holdups, as everybody seems to be. Installation of new entrance door and foyer. There's been application of three and a half inches of insulation on all the exterior walls, the inside of the exterior walls. The east wall, which is Madison, has been raised, a new wall installed and windows. West wall is in process of being exposed to determine the feasibility of replicating the historic look to the, to enhance the perimeter. All that old facade has been taken off, and there's brick under there, and we're working with a renovation mason to try to bring back the old look. And I think some of you might have seen pictures, I can make sure that, that used to be a restaurant that catered to the folks at the depot. That was back in like 1905, 1907, when the depot was built. The oldest part of our building was built in like the 18, late 1890s. We're trying to enhance the history of that and make sure that that has a significant look on Bautel Place. In-kind contributions to date include from the Dupont Corporation, 64 square feet of insulation for all those inside exterior walls. That's a previously mentioned three and a half inches. Valley Roofing recently installed a new roof on the main building at a discount price of $34,800. We had a bid from another roofing contractor, and the labor alone was $35,000. So Valley Roofing is heavily discounted, and as I point out here, it included about 60-gauge membrane, two and a half inches of insulation, the fasteners and labor. In addition, they've included in that price the new entrance over the, roof over the new entrance, it's going to be steel. And we want this building to have a light industrial look. We want it to look very nice. We want to enhance that whole area. Oral steel, discount all steel headers and support posts for inside the building because we had some structural issues that were discovered when all the asbestos had been removed. Lawrence &amp; Smith have donated $20,000 of the window frames and the glass. Local veteran is donating all landscaping materials that we'll be putting in some of the small green spaces this spring. The Home Depot, besides donating tools and paint and so on and so forth, their foundation recently donated all the insulation and all the drywall that's on the interior, and all that has been installed. Delta College, their CAD CNC instructor and student made a sheet metal model of the floor plan, so, and then little replicas of the tools and so on, so we can move that around so we don't have to move stuff, and we can get better flow and so on and so forth. There was a project for the student, and we've asked, or we've been asked by SVSU if we can do some co-op work with some of their students, internships. The Niles Foundation, which is an industrial paint company, had agreed to power wash and paint the exterior, but now that we're going to put siding up on two of the walls before winter gets here next week, we're talking to them now about painting all the interior walls, priming and painting those at their cost. Examples of interaction with other veterans in the community, you know, we've received a referral from Saginaw VA Medical Center to construct a step for an elderly veteran. You know, we're not open, we're not doing these things, but we're getting requests to come out and do things out in the community, and we're certainly not going to pass that by. SVSU Department Student Military Affairs, there was a student who lost his car to a deer collision and totaled it, and he had just moved here. He was also, he was an Uber driver and some other thing. So we had been given a car that we were going to raffle, and we decided the best thing would be to give it to him. He was just elated, so he's back working and going to school. A lady veteran has volunteered to assist with our social media, disseminate our messages through the various outlets, Facebook, and Constant Contact, et cetera. Saginaw Bay Sailing Association has contacted us, and are offering scholarships to veterans for sail training. Veteran Spouse has reached out to discuss startup business of raising and training veteran comfort dogs. I don't know, Craig, she may have had some conversation with you, I'm not sure. The Saginaw Bay Land Conservancy has reached out to partner on future projects. Fresh Air Samaritan Counseling Center has received a grant to counsel veterans. They're in Midland, Saginaw, and Bay, and we referred several veterans to them. Not all veterans are eligible for VA services in Saginaw, or they may wish not to go there. A couple of manufacturing businesses actually have provided tours in trying to recruit employees. And again, we're, we can't really do a lot of activity until we get the building open and occupied, but we're trying to make referrals as best we can. And we've got an Air Force veteran locksmith who's been in business for 40 years, changed all the locks for us, and he's willing to teach basic locksmithing, if anybody's interested, at the building. In the past several months, we received a couple of table saws, radial arm saw, chop saws, as noted here. Our grant applications, as far as funding, because I know that's always a point of interest. We recently received grants from the Gerstaker Foundation, $55,000 directed towards part of the electrical. Consumers Energy provided us $10,000, AT&amp;T $4,200, the Nicholas Family Foundation $20,000. That's the third gift from that foundation that we've received. We also have application before the Osteller Fund, and I expect that they will be making a decision on that in the next month. We received two grants from them previously. We are submitting to the SC Johnson Foundation, and we just started an online social media fundraiser to see what we can garner from the local community. This year, the Bay Area Runners Club hosted a 5K, 10K walk. Tri-City Brewing did a nice classic car show. Both want to make those annual events. We were the only veterans' organization selected to participate in the Dow Great Lakes Bay Invitational at the Midland Country Club, and all those not-for-profits that were selected, there were 30 some, received $4,500. But depending on how you're pairing with, how your teams finish, there was additional opportunity to raise, to receive money. And our two, Brittany Ultimari and Angel Yin, finished high enough that provides us another $5,000. Community outreach has been one of our objectives, and of course, being in the first ward and with the housing project nearby, we've had quite a bit of discussion introducing some of those folks, especially the students, to CNC, laser engraving, and so on and so forth, of which we're going to use part of the Dow golf monies to buy another CNC machine and laser engraver. We're looking at ourselves somewhat as a preschool for skilled trades. We are not intending on being a certifying group. There are others in the area, but a lot of folks are shy to go in. Where will they go to have an opportunity to be introduced to this technology? So by doing Saturday afternoon tech fairs, or reaching out through the library, or to the schools, to say on a Saturday, if a Boy Scout troop wants to come in, or local neighborhood kids... kids, so that we can start a little mentoring process and maybe encourage those kids to be motivated to go into one of those trades that they may never have been introduced to. Our general contractor, Srinus Johnson Construction, we're on a handshake agreement, pay-as-you-go, kind of unusual these days and times. But I do want to say that we've made all of our bills, we're not in arrears on anything. We've got a maintenance fund on Battery Park, we have a maintenance fund on the Gold Star Monument, and we intend to have a maintenance fund on this project. Escones are electrical contractors, Smiley Plumbing and HVAC, Shaw Contract, and Yegra Asphalt, amongst the others that have been working with us. We've got an excellent relationship with the City of Bay and Eagle. It was Eagle, formerly the DEQ, that provided $190,000 when the city designated us as a brownfield site, when soil, all the soil was contaminated from previous gas station, and when they excavated, found a tank that had PCBs in it and so on. So that then led to DEQ saying we'd like to do some investigation on the building for asbestos, of which they found inside and outside. And when that was all removed, it showed the substructures underneath that were not... You know, when we had building inspections, everything worked. You know, the water ran, the heat turned on, the lights worked, but then you were able to see how everything was patched together and not decoded. So our price has increased, but we're matching that. I want to mention real quickly about, oh, we have had some real serious discussions with Saginaw Valley Naval Ship Museum. Couple of our board members are on their board, a couple of their members are on our board, and we've talked about urban gardening for some time. And they have nine acres, that's part of their museum that's owned by them. Where the ship is docked is Dow property. It's leased, I think, for 99 years for a dollar or something like that, but Marathon gave them nine acres, and they're very excited to work with us. We get up some hoop houses and do some urban gardening. Gardening is therapeutic, very therapeutic, and we're finding in other communities, a real good response for veterans. And we can introduce kids. If kids want to go out and learn how to grow, you can grow year-round, so that's another little outlet that we are planning on expanding into. And we've also had a number of conversations with Debbie Kiesel from the city. I'm sorry. That's me, I thought.
Might be your mother, if you want to get her.
That would be a long call. So, you know, we're interested in working with Shawna on the Land Bank Authority in recovering some of these... This is amazing. I'm sorry. I could go over there and grab it, but look what happens. But to use some of these homes for learning labs, so if somebody is not familiar, never had hung drywall, or put a floor in, or the plastic plumbing, then we have an opportunity to renovate some of these homes and get them back into the market and teach people. We've had meetings with the two reserve units, the Coast Guard Station, there's 24 coasties that are on permanent duty here for three-to-four-year tours. They're all billeted in apartments. They used to be at the station on the river, but not anymore. And we asked them how many had a table saw in their apartment, not any had. So they were, they're very anxious that when we get open, that they can come and work on projects. Their commanding officers think this would be a great place for team building. We can use them as far as any community improvement activities. I want to speak real briefly to the ARPA funds. I think all of you may know that Bay City has allocated $190,000 approved to the project, and the state, through the budget process, has allocated $300,000. We won't be receiving those funds until probably next May. The city, we're not sure. I know that they're working out their contracts. They went with Norwood Judd to approve of their process, and we have an application before the county here for $250,000 for this year, that hopefully we will be fortunate enough to be selected. So where has this put us on phase one with $710,000? If all these funds come through, those that are pending and those that have been approved, we're lacking about $100,000 on the first phase renovation of the main building. And when we get that done, then we can occupy, and then we can start to be active and bring people in to do hands-on activities. We've had a series of meet-and-greet meetings in October at the Edson, in November at Governor's Quarters. We have one scheduled that meets and more coming up on December 1st, and it's really an opportunity for veterans to come and learn more about the project and how they may wish to be part of it. And I just want to remind everybody that Thursday is Veterans Day. I know you're off here, but there's the program in front of the county building at 11:00, and the Edson had scheduled 2:00, but it's been changed to 1:00. So if you were planning attending at 2:00, go early, go to 1:00, or it'll be up. So with that, appreciate all the support that the county has extended. We look at being a very good neighbor. We are working with Mark with regard to veterans' benefits. We've sent a number of people over to see him and have him at some of our meetings to talk about veterans' benefits. If there are any questions? If not...
Commissioner Conan.
Keith, looks like you're about $350,000 short right now, $350,000.
Yeah, that would be...
To open up the doors. Once you get the money to open up the doors, how are you going to put together programs to provide to the veterans and to provide to other folks?
Very good question, Kim. We're already doing programming. We've got a list of those who are willing to be instructors. We've got a couple of people that want to teach lathe operation. We've got others. We know a lot of retired shop instructors, or folks who are certified out of Delta's trade, construction trades program. Our local labor unions are willing to come in and teach basic electrical or electric plumbing. We have letters on file of organizations that want to come in and participate to do... I hate to say craft things, because we're more than a craft center, but for those who want to come in and just do some socializing, so that's our next step. In fact, now that there's more, there's more funds out there now on training, we intend on going after some of those training grants through Michigan Works and set up a curriculum. We've got a draft curriculum, so we're working on that. But our primary focus is to get the building open and occupied, then we can do the programming. And we're very concerned, not concerned, we're very, in our planning sustainability, and we figure that by doing some of these home renovations, by urban gardening and other income sources, that we'll be able to maintain a financially stable future.
Commissioner Biggett, did you have comment?
No.
I just have a quick question. When you say open and occupied, do you plan to house? President, what does occupied mean?
That people can come in and participate in the programs. We're not residential.
Okay.
No, but a little discussion earlier with Nick, you know, the homeless folks that have to be out of the Samaritan Center, for instance. You know, they go to the park, they go to the library. You know, we have a place that they can come to. Now, when I say that, that's kind of generic, all homeless. We're veterans-focused, veteran-directed, and we know that we have to interact with non-veterans in the community, because we're going to be, we're drawing on the non-veteran community's support. So there's no reason that we can't have select programs for those who want to participate in those. If you can keep somebody productive and keep their interest high, and make them feel like they're a human being, you can open doors for them, you can assist them. Sometimes, you know, we talked about having a soup group Thursday. So anybody in the area who wants to drop in, have a soup and a sandwich, and learn about programs, or want to make a birdhouse, or want to do a little mass production, we've got plenty of projects. For those who, you know, speaking about the homeless, especially the homeless veteran population, obviously, if you're homeless, that's an issue. But we don't have a huge homeless issue in this county. I don't think Bay County, the last I researched, Bay County doesn't meet the top 25 for homelessness in the state. My research with the VA Medical Center shows that there's about 30 homeless in Bay County. There's probably three or four on the streets here, mostly by choice, perhaps because of mental illness that choice is made for them. But there's a place for them, and Samaritan does a great job in transitioning. Four of their beds are, three of the four beds that are designated for veterans are full at any one time. So there is a turnover, constant turnover. Saginaw, as I recall, has about 100 homeless, and Midland has five or six. But during the COVID, no veteran should have been on the streets unless it was by choice, because the CARES Act provided vouchers that could be used at motels, hotels, and so on and so forth. So, you know, when we talk about the homeless, everybody does a real emotional reaction to that, and rightfully so, because I don't know if anybody here's been homeless before, but you're right on the precipice of taking your life, or getting into issues that, you know, whether it's drugs, or just less than a human being. So we feel very strongly that we already have had an impact on helping folks with depression, those suffering PTSD. Again, it's a matter of occupying your time in a positive manner, and mentoring some of these folks, encouraging them. We talked about having Tuesday TED Talks. I don't know if you're all familiar with TED Talks. You know, there's any subject on there. So whoever's in there in our classroom, we would just have, you know, a certain time of the day, TED Talk on motivation or whatever, and then engage in conversation. So, you know, it's, the idea of this concept is to be a magnet to draw people in, and then you can deal with whatever is bothering them. I'm a veteran from Vietnam, and I didn't know that I was eligible for VA benefits until 2012, when I retired from the hospital foundation. And I was diagnosed with PTSD and depression, and being treated for it. And the counseling really helped me, because I couldn't understand myself a little better. I just thought that I was as normal as anybody. Well, what's normal, I guess. So my point is, when I applied for benefits and was denied, I had to apply three times. Then I finally had to go to Detroit and go before the judge out of DC by television, and finally was provided the benefits. It took, that was in 2019. It took seven years. And I think I'm a pretty astute person, but a lot of these folks are denied and walk away. So if we can help them by engaging with them and explaining, or have Mark explain, or somebody else, and take them, we've literally taken people to the VA. When we were dismantling the building after asbestos was removed, we had a work crew from the county jail. We had three folks every night from August of 2019 until March of 2020, that helped deconstruct the interior of the building, a total of 12, what do you call them, prisoners, I guess?
Inmates.
And three were veterans. One had a hip injury that he incurred during service, and when he fulfilled his sentence, we took him to the VA, and he ended up having hip surgery. He never would have done that. So it's more than just happenstance. In these cases, these issues are all over. When I'm out and about, which is frequently, I get talking to somebody, and it's amazing to me how many people are veterans and have no idea that they may be eligible. And these aren't entitlements, these are earned benefits that these men and women deserve. I think some of you, in that information, when I applied for the grant here for ARPA funds, Bay County has over 8,000 veterans, one of the highest per capita of all 83 counties in Michigan. Six hundred women, and nobody pays any attention to the lady veterans. We've had meetings, or we've had 10 to 12 ladies, and they can't wait for a place like this to open, a safe, welcoming environment that's not a bar. That's the other thing that differentiates us between American Legion and the Plah and so on, is that you won't find a six-pack over there. Now, I'm not saying we won't have an activity or an event, but it'll be a planned event, so. So anyway, I didn't mean to take up this much time, Mr. Chairman, but in response to questions.
Commissioner Biggett.
So the city gave you money, and so they must have thought that you qualified for ARPA funds. I saw something in one of our documents that said that maybe they don't qualify for ARPA funds, so I guess we need clarification on that. There was one of the documents that we got previously, so I don't know if anybody can answer that question.
Jim.
Would they qualify for ARPA funds? Sounds like from the programs they have, they should.
Yeah, it's based on what the purpose of the funds are for, so, I mean...
Yeah, we know that there's restrictions. You know, I went, last Wednesday, I went to Gladwin to an MCOC meeting, and Michigan State Extension is doing these series around the state about what the ups and upside and downside are of ARPA funds, and who qualifies, and your accounting, and so on and so forth. I learned a tremendous amount. Yeah, we qualify. We're a not-for-profit organization, that's why I pointed out, a 501(c)(3). We're not a veterans 501(c)(19) or (c)(4). Those are different. Our mission is helping veterans help themselves, and I think the question posed here earlier this summer was, well, if they're veteran-focused, if they're only doing veterans, that's pretty narrow. And my response back was, well, then you really can't help a women's shelter, or you can't help low-income, or you can't help programs for kids, because that's restricted. You know, veterans are still part of the general population. So like I mentioned, Warner Northcross Judd did the adjudicating for the city, and I mentioned that at the MCOC meeting, because a lot of these smaller municipalities are having a real hard time interpreting and don't have the resources that a larger community like ours has. So we contend we're eligible, but obviously, that's not us to interpret, so.
Jim? Yeah, we would always have the option, Keith, to think of using general fund money, because a lot of the lost revenue will be replaced under the, some of the CARES Act, which we've already accessed, as well as, you know, any future of this ARPA money could be displaced, and you could, you could actually, we could use general fund money that is going to be replaced by ARPA money, so. In case, yeah, we just want to make sure we don't run afoul of those regulations.
No, absolutely. You know, it's a terrible thing to have to give money back with penalty.
So, and at this point, I believe Bay County has contributed, correct?
Through the soldiers, through the Veterans Village Fund, yes. When I was on the Soldier Sailors Relief Commission, which now has morphed into the Department of Veterans Affairs. We received $75,000 to make purchase, to help purchase the building, $50,000 for partial renovation. So yes, there is a record. And the state asked that question, had we ever received state funding, of which we did through Eagle for the contamination, so I think there's a good record there, so.
Well, Keith, thank you for your service and sharing the story and what it is you're trying to do. We appreciate all the information.
You're all welcome to come and tour this at any time, just get in touch with me. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Motion to re- Motion to receive would be in order. Support. Any discussion? With that being said, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. We have an application for the building authority from Rick Bukowski. Motion to receive would be in order. Support. Discussion. With that being said, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. We will move into reports and resolutions of committee. We have Commissioner Fox from Ways and Means. You are up, young lady.
Number 2021-175, the public guardian contract. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-176, the treatment court grant awards. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-177, the road patrol contracts for 2022 with the city of Auburn, Bangor Township, Frankenless, Cullen, Monitor, Pinconning, including the K-9 unit Portsmouth and Williams Township. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Resolution 2021-178, the road patrol contracts for 2022, Cullen and Fraser Townships. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-179, the Bangor Township and Bangor School Resource Officer Contract for fiscal year 2022-23. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-180, the Bay City Public School Resource Officer Contract for the 2022-2023 year. I move this resolution.
Support. Any discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-181, the Pinconning School Resource Officer Contract for the 2022-23 year. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-182, the funding for the animal services truck and cab. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-183, the wage and fringe benefit appropriations for 2021. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-184, the memorandum of understanding with Issue Media Group. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-185, the emergency management performance grant. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-186, the purchase of the Jeep and Plow. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-187, the carpet replacement in courtrooms 1, 6, and 7. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-188, the agreement with Covenant Occupational Health for Random Drug Testing. I move this resolution.
Any discussion? Support. Look, there we go. Any discussion now? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Number 2021-189, the Delta Fitness and Recreation Center Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support. Any discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
And number 2021-190, the general fund payables. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
All right, my work is done. Back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. We'll move into personnel, human services. Commissioner Johnson, because we've delayed this until December.
So I believe the only piece that I had to work on has been taken away, so.
It's all right. You get an easy day.
It's all right.
All right. So let's move to Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Conan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 2021-192, reports of the county executive. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. That's all the business, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Conan. So we'll move in reports of county officials. County Exec, Mr. Barsho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I'd just like to take this opportunity to express appreciation to our county treasurer, Shawna Walraven, Bill Boland, and Jim Lillo from the Bay County Road Commission, and the Bay Area Water Authority, and last but not least, Jan Heistad and her finance department staff on their incredible work refinancing the bonded indebtedness of Bay Area Water Authority. As you know, Bay County is not an owner on the authority. However, the full faith and credit of the county was used to back the sale of some $65 million in bonds that financed the construction. And the historically low interest rates that are available today, and the diligent dedication of the people I referenced to their jobs, will result in $7.1 million in savings to Bay County residents who are water customers of the authority. So I want to thank you, Jan, and the staff, and the folks who aren't here for, you know, keeping the interests of the ratepayers in mind and keeping those water rates as low as possible. So that'll be a savings of $7.1 million. So just thought I'd mention that and thank everyone involved.
Very good. Short and sweet.
Yeah.
Very good. Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any new business? Anything under miscellaneous? Yeah.
Or announcements?
We have announcements?
So I missed last Tuesday. It is at 11:00, the veterans, in front of the county building here, the Veterans Services. It's the 11th hour of the 11th month of the 11th day, so it's 11:00 AM. And then they, as you mentioned, the Edson's going to be at 1:00 instead of 2:00. So it's 11:00 here, 1:00 at the Edson for the Veterans Day Services.
Very good, very good. And I have an announcement that on Tuesday, November 30th, my intent is to have a special board meeting to address our budget. So we've kind of given everybody a heads-up that tentatively we will be able to finalize our budget before December, so that would be a good accomplishment. And Commissioner Herrick?
It is me. I think, I'd like to, I think on behalf of all of us, offer our congratulations to our county clerk.
Yes.
Katie Zanotti, I heard her daughter the other day, Vivian Phillips. So she'll be gone for a little while, but, you know, thoughts of the baby, and the dad especially, because he'll be awake a little bit more than he usually is, at least for a little while. So congratulations, Katie, and Nate. Hope to see you soon.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Are we in miscellaneous announcements? I'm going to back up to miscellaneous.
Sure.
So we had two building authority appointments in one person, so what happens next?
Well, we're going to, when we get to that, we're going to discuss it, because that'll be next on the agenda. Very good. So if everybody's all set with announcements, let's go ahead and talk about appointments. So in November, which is now, we have Rick Bukowski, who has sent in his application, and Mr. Phillips's application is in the mail or on its way and has agreed to be reappointed. So what I'd like to do is have a motion to receive or actually vote on appointing Rick Bukowski and Mr. Phillips to another six-year term with the building authority.
Do we know if Mr. Phillips applied?
He has, but we haven't received his application at this point.
Yeah, we talked to him later.
I understand, Mary. It makes sense not to wait till next month, right?
It would make sense to me to wait till we actually have it in hand, but.
We can do that.
But we consider appointment, Mr. Bukowski?
Yes. So motion to.
I'll move that. Mr. Bukowski, you appoint it to the building authority.
I'll support it.
Very good. Any discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Fox. In December, we have Veterans Affairs Committee. There's two four-year terms expiring. We also have Department on Aging Advisory Committee, which is a four-two-year term, and that would be in districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. And Commissioner Johnson.
If we have nothing else, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Good. Support. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye opposed?